Proclamation from the governor to proclaim it across the state.
Nice.
And we're currently working on overhead signs throughout the state doing some watch for motorcycles.
That's great.
Type of messages.
That's good.
I have with me today, one of our coordinators from our local chapter, Mark Kurzner. He's the Queen Anne's County Coordinator. I am the local chapter director as well as the executive director for the state. And Marianne Jackson is here representing a national motorcycle rights organization Motorcycle Riders Foundation. She's the state of Maryland representative.
Okay, that's great. That's good. Well, we really appreciate it, council.
No, guys, go ahead and do this again for you. It's been a year already. Like I said, incredibly important. Look twice, save a life, right?
Correct.
Amen.
We have signs that say that you can put in your front yard.
I know.
Nice. That's good.
Thank you for what you're doing to promote motorcycle safety. May it save more lives.
Yep.
In the words of Steppenwolf, keep the motors running, head out on the highway, but with a babe, do it safely.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I concur with Dave. It's been a year already, but to keep doing this every year, that just keeps it in front of people to make sure that we're looking and that we are sharing the road with our fellow motorcycle drivers. So we greatly appreciate it and glad that the governor is recognizing it as well across the state of Maryland.
Yep, that's good. And we really appreciate all you guys have done. So we've got something for you. Come on up.
All right.
This is Amy's 50th anniversary in the state of Maryland this year.
Wow, wow, 15 years. Okay. Next up, we have another proclamation for correctional officer and employee of the week from May 5th to the 11th. So Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Proclamation Correctional Officers and Employees Week, May 5th, 2024 through May 11th, 2024. Whereas correctional officers and employees staff the Talbot County Detention Center for the purpose of maintaining custody, security, and control of every inmate every hour of every day of every week of every month of every year. And whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Talbot County Department of Corrections are essential to the county's criminal justice system and public safety by not only maintaining custody, security, and control of individuals committed to the detention center, but also by creating opportunities for inmates to resolve those personal issues that led to their incarceration. And whereas the correctional officers and employees of the Talbot County Department of Corrections are responsible for the administration and operation of a variety of programs and services beyond the walls of the detention center, including but not limited to work release, electronic home monitoring, and community service. And whereas the important work of correctional officers and employees rarely receives the recognition from the public it deserves, yet the professionalism, dedication, and courage routinely exhibited by these employees in the performance of assigned duties is worthy of and deserves our utmost respect. And whereas Talbot County is most fortunate to employ this highly professional, deeply committed, and extremely capable cadre of correctional officers and employees. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Talbot County, and encourage all citizens of the county to recognize, acknowledge, and appreciate the many contributions made by these individuals to the safety of our community and to the quality of life enjoyed by all residents of and visitors to Talbot County, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County the 7th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to go ahead and put this into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, that's great. So Joe and Cindy, you want to come on up? Welcome.
How are you all?
Good, good. How are you guys?
I'd like to thank the council for recognizing.
Could you tell us who you are? Yes.
Joe Hughes, Deputy Director.
Okay.
Cindy Green, Security Captain.
Okay, great.
First, I'd like to thank the council for recognition of Correctional Officer Week. But this council has done more for, with us for the whole year. So it's not, we're being recognized for this week, but we feel, we want to thank you all for the whole year.
Right.
You recognize the correctional officers all year long.
Yeah.
And it's more than just one week.
Yep, yep.
Correctional officers.
Appreciate that.
And I've been in corrections 30 years, and these are some of the best correctional officers I've worked with.
That's great.
And they're dedicated, professional, and they're always doing, it's always something new every day. Corrections has changed over the years. When I first got in corrections, it's a totally different corrections now.
Right.
And these guys are willing to step forward and move forward with the new plans and the new ways to help the inmates. We're trying to, we don't want them to come back. We want to see them out at Walmart and say, hey, how are you doing? And then they say, hey, it's good to see you on the outside.
Right.
And now on the inside. And then, then we knew we're doing our job too.
Right, that's correct, yeah.
I just want to
Yeah.
second his sentiments out. I really do appreciate the council supporting us throughout the years. I've been with the county for 13 years, planning on being with you for a good while.
That's good.
So thank you for the support. Thank you to our officers, my officers, because I've been with all of them since I started, so.
That's great.
It's been good to see the growth.
Yeah, that's great. So, okay, council, were you going to say something?
Well, after council.
Okay, okay, all right.
No, I'll let go of the thanks. I mean, you're sending thanks up here, but I want to send the thanks right back to you guys because I mean, we do try to recognize you throughout the year, but you're, you know, what you guys are doing 24/7, 365, and I guess every four years, 366, right? It's not going on notice, so thank you guys for that. And also, I got the chance to thank Director Kokolos about your audit results. So I just want to thank you guys now that you are all here, again, on all that you do to bring that title home to Talbot County. So thank you.
Mr. Hughes, Ms. Green, thank you, and thank you to all of the correctional officers who are here today. We couldn't have the accredited facility. We couldn't have the daily safety for our community. We couldn't have the humane treatment for our inmates without the professionalism that you bring to your jobs every day, and we're grateful for that.
Hard to add to that. You know, I will say that we really, truly on behalf of the entire county are grateful for all you do, all you contribute, and the length of time that you do that. So thank you so much for everything.
And I'll echo what my colleague said, and being a new council member, really being able to go over and see the facility and see what's needed for the inmates, I mean, that was really eye-opening for me being a new council member. And so, you know, you have the support of this council, and I'm glad to see we're going to get that shower fix, Cindy. And so that is a good thing. And so, you know, we're here to support. We're here to encourage all of you in the work that you do working for the county, and we're here, you know, to make Talbot County better. So we thank you for your dedication, Mr. Hughes, and Cindy, we thank you for your leadership. We thank you for your dedication and all of the years that you've put in working and supporting Talbot County and probably training some of those that are here today. So thank you all.
And I'll just add to it too, Ms. Green, Mr. Hughes, that it's very, very, we're blessed to have people like yourself that are dedicated to serving the community, trying to help the community, because we want to help, you know, we don't want to damage. We want to help. And that way, like you said, Mr. Hughes, they don't come back, you know, so. And I want to commend you guys too, all the employees that work day and night. You know, when we're sleeping, you're protecting us and making sure that things are safe around here too. And I know that's hard. I know it's hard on the families. And we really appreciate the spouses and the girlfriends and the boyfriends, you know, helping out too. Because it's not only you guys, you have families. So we want to, as a council, we want to thank them too for all of the family situations that you put yourself through and dedicate to Talbot County, and we really appreciate that, for sure. Mr. Stamp?
Well, the council has spoken well. As county manager, I'm just very proud to work with all of you. The word inspire comes to my mind because in the old days, we ran a jail. In the new days, there is a level of compassion that I haven't seen in other places, where you understand people make mistakes and you help them get from one side to the other. And you're all about giving somebody a second chance. And that level of compassion is inspirational, and it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Great words. So if guys want to come on up, we've got something for you. If you bring the whole gang up here, that'd be fine.
Can you see us?
I see the heads.
That's fine.
Do you want to come down? Maybe Keesha come down or?
Um, I lost Lynn again. Lynn, can you move to the side of Mr. Step on the other side?
Come on in.
Girl, boy, girl, boy.
Say Keesha here.
Got tall people up here, I guess.
Yeah.
There we go. Now we got everyone. Okay, you guys ready? One, two, three. Okay, and one more? One, two, and three. Thank you.
Okay, okay, that was great. That was great. So, okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and do the public hearing. And we're getting ready to go ahead and do, open the hearing with the constant yield. And Mr. Lesher, would you mind reading that, please?
Mr. Callahan has called this public hearing to order. There are two public hearings today. If you wish to speak at either of these hearings, please state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak if you are representing yourself, five minutes to speak if speaking on behalf of a group or association. The county council, this is for the Constant Yield Public Hearing. The county council in the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget is proposing to adopt a real property tax rate of 79.10 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for all properties located outside the incorporated towns. This includes an education supplement of four cents for the increase in funding for Talbot County Public Schools, and is 4.76 higher than the current real property tax rate. This rate is 9.5% higher than the constant yield rate of 72.73 cents and will generate $3,653,550 more in property tax revenues in fiscal year 2025 from the unincorporated area of the county. Properties located within the incorporated towns will again be granted a tax rate differential which sets their real property tax rates between 6.01 and 13.3 cents lower than the county rate. The county real property tax rates for properties located within the towns are higher than the constant yield rate for the towns. The county council will not adopt the fiscal year 2025 tax rate today. Fiscal year 2025 tax rate will be adopted as part of the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 annual budget and appropriation ordinance currently scheduled for adoption on Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. We can now open the public hearing to comments from the general public, if there is anybody who wishes to do so.
Okay. I guess, Ray, you're over here, you're going to start, Democrat. Do you guys want to come up? Okay, you guys, anybody like to, yes, sir, come on up.
This will be the next one.
Yeah, that's fine. No problem, no problem. Anybody else would like to come up?
We then will close the public hearing on the constant yield tax rate. And for, if Mrs. Moran will please read the title of Bill Number 1553.
Bill Number 1553, An Act to Establish the 2024-2025 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
And we have a PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Stamp, do you have staff prepared to do this?
Yes, we are. Thank you, council.
Yep.
Gives me pleasure to be able to sit here before you today. Number one, thank a lot of people for a lot of hard work. Just for the public's awareness, this process began with a strategic plan, strategic planning process that began in November through December, which sets the priorities of the council through goals and objectives. And then we flow into a period of budgeting between January and April. And a lot of hard work was put into this effort. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank council for your leadership. Also like to thank Martha Sparks and Caitlin Foster-Clark and Jessica Morris especially, and the department heads and the leaders of the numerous organizations and agencies around the county who worked with us to figure out how to supply the best that we can. Clearly, we can't meet all the needs, but we did our best. Want to take just a minute to go through a couple of things. Overarchingly, we continue to strive toward recognition of our historical and successful conservative budgeting process. We try to use those skills of overestimating expenses so that we come in under and underestimating revenues so that we do better on the revenue side. Those have served us well in the past. We continue to do that. We also are proud of the fact, as council is, that we still maintain a healthy fund balance. That's a savings account, and it's important to have that in these uncertain economic times that we are in. We don't know what's in front of us, so we have a bit of a buffer to make sure we can navigate those waters as they move by. And then finally, we continue to realize some of the lowest property and income tax in the state of Maryland with any county. And Martha Sparks will go through that in more detail as we go forward. And then finally, this council continues in this budget to prioritize both public safety and education, trying to meet the needs of all other areas, but those were definitely prioritized. We use an overarching strategy in addressing the management of the county services as looking at what I call the three P strategy. That's looking at personnel, processes, and projects. Personnel to personnel, we find ourselves right now in a very challenging period of time for workforce. So great efforts are made to retain our workforce and, of course, recruit new talent in all areas of county government. We all recognize that are the employees that drive the successes that we realize in our quest to be good public servants for our community. Finally, processes, and that is really about looking at the old way we've done things and leveraging technology and to address these processes to, you know, make them more fluid and, you know, just to improve the processes in general. And then finally, projects. We have a number of projects that we propose in this budget that address infrastructure, public safety, education, and so on. I'll talk a little bit about those. But before moving forward, just a snapshot of where we are today in the FY '24 budget. We're coming into the last several months. I'm happy to report that we are on target to meet the budget, which is the goal. We've seen a lot of accomplishments occur in the past year. We are proud of the airport modernization project, which is a multi-phase project to address needs to make our airport a safer airport for those that use it. We're happy that we have a new gymnasium, pickleball court, completion of the health department facility. We will find, we will see in June of this year that we have a new location for our health department. We've seen capital improvements with our Region Two wastewater treatment plant and extending sewer, rescuing failing septic systems, and therefore improving the environment. We're proud about that, as well as infrastructure enhancements to the courthouse, corrections, road repairs and upgrades across the 370 miles of county roadways, and a number of other projects that we are very proud and trying to be good public servants for our community. With that, council, I'm going to hand this presentation over to Martha Sparks, your finance director, and thank you, Martha.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Always good to be before you. So today and previously, staff presented to council a balanced general fund budget of $163,970,000 for the 2025 fiscal year. This budget continues the county's conservative budgeting methodology. These budget practices have served the county well and have placed us in a healthy financial position. Some highlights from the 2025 budget include revenues that are 2% over FY '24 revenues, which are in accordance with the county charter. We also added one cent to the property tax rate as authorized by the voters of Talbot County in November 2020 to support and enhance public safety, a four-cent education supplement to support Talbot County schools' budget initiatives. The funding to Talbot County schools of $54.6 million is an increase of $3.65 million from their FY '24 funding and is $2.8 million above the local share funding, which is required from the state. This changed slightly. We received final calculations from MSDE on our local, required local share, and our required local share decreased by $200,000, but that did not affect the support that council has already included in the budget. So the total funding has been set. It was just our local share that decreased through those final calculations. Capital improvement project funding, also identified as CIP funding for Talbot County Public Schools, includes $16.9 million for our capital project request for the Chapel District Elementary School renovations and $1.5 million in additional CIP funding that council has appropriated for TCPS to determine the priority of its use against its CIP requests. For county operations, this budget has included a 3% cost of living adjustment and one cent for county employees. In this budget, the county has continued its investment in public safety by adding four public safety communication specialists, the public will recognize that as 911 operators, and also one student resource officer supervisor for the sheriff's office. The county has also increased its appropriations to outside agencies by $1.2 million. Fund balance reserves will be used to make a significant investment in county infrastructure. Capital improvement projects in the FY '25 budget in the amount of $27.5 million. Fund balance reserves will also be used to invest $2.98 million for the purchase of vehicles and equipment recognized in this budget as capital outlay. In our FY '25 budget, we have projected a 12.3% increase in property tax revenues, a 19% increase in income tax revenues that reflect a slight modification to budgeting for our income taxes to align with the revenues that we've realized over the last five years. These revenues are historically volatile for the county and must be carefully projected and monitored. These increases, combined with projected increases of other local taxes, governmental revenues, and nonrecurring transfers of impact fees from the Development Impact Fund, along with the nonrecurring transfers of fund balance reserves, will bring us to an overall increase in revenues of 27.26%. Talbot County receives most of its revenues from property and income taxes. Together, they make up 81.1% of the county's operating revenues and 61.5% of total FY '25 budgeted revenues. Recordation and transfer taxes are the next largest group of county revenues, contributing approximately $8.6 million of the county's operating revenues. In FY '21 and FY '22, Talbot County experienced its highest levels of recordation and transfer tax revenues. In FY '23 and FY '24, these revenues moved to more normal levels, and our FY '25 budget projections are in alignment with those levels. These revenues are heavily tied to activity in the real estate market in Talbot County. The county has historically made very conservative projections of its revenues due to the volatility of its income, recordation, and transfer tax revenues. This strategy of under-budgeting our revenues has enabled us to build healthy reserves. In this budget cycle, we've modified our approach by more accurately projecting revenues to be in alignment with the revenues the county's received over the last five years. This realignment shifts us away from building reserves and shifts us more to supporting our general fund operating expenditures. In November 2020, the voters in Talbot County supported an amendment to our charter that enabled one cent to be added to our property tax rate for the support of the county's expenditures related to public safety. This began in fiscal year '22 and will end with the fiscal year '26 budget. Council has an opportunity to create a ballot initiative to be included on the ballot in November 2024 if it chooses to ask the citizens to vote to continue this valuable support to the county's public safety, which includes the sheriff's office, the detention center, and the Department of Emergency Services. The county has used the revenues from one cent for enhancing public safety for 26 positions, including additional deputies, school resource officers for our schools, paramedics, EMTs, and 911 operators, a career ladder for the Department of Emergency Services, and the inclusion of the sheriff's office, paramedics, and EMTs into the Leop's retirement plan and the Department of Corrections officers' inclusion into the Core's retirement plan. Leop's and Core's are enhanced retirement programs through the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System for public safety employees. As you can see from the slide, each year, the county has used more than the revenues generated from that one cent to enhance public safety personnel serving the citizens and visitors to Talbot County. Here's a slide of our five-year history of our property taxes. Our proposed property tax rate of .7910 for county-owned properties was calculated using property tax revenues 2% over FY '24 revenues in accordance with our charter and with prior year revenue levels that are certified by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. It includes the revenues from one additional cent to, the rate also includes the one additional cent to support public safety and a four-cent educational supplement to support Talbot County schools' budget initiatives. An overall property tax rate will increase 4.76 cents over FY '24, which amounts to a 6.4% increase. The county tax bill for a home with a property assessment of $300,000 will increase from $2,230.20 to $2,373, a $142.80 increase, $120, which is attributable to the education supplement. And we provided a sample of what a homeowner's tax bill would look like here. Here you can see the property tax rates of Baltimore City and the 23 counties in Maryland. This information comes from the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation website. And as you can see, the Talbot County has the second, has the lowest property tax rate in Maryland. This has changed from the previous schedule that I presented back to you in April because while I went to SSTAT for the rates for all of the counties, upon you in April because while I went to SSTAT for the rates for all of the counties, upon review of Montgomery County's property tax rate schedule, they have property tax rate components that are comparable to ours for our education tax, general county, they have a fire district, and those are charged to all districts in the county. So once I added those together, they are comparable to what is included in ours. So I made that adjustment, and it accurately reflects our standing. So all I can say is this was one of the few times that you'll ever hear me say that I'm glad we came last. For income tax rates compared to other counties, Talbot County has the second lowest income tax rate in 2024. Fitch Ratings best describes Talbot County's income tax revenues when it said income taxes are a higher percentage of revenues than is true for most Maryland counties. This is particularly due to the very low tax environment compared with the rest of the state, which provides incentive for a small number of high-income earners with second homes to declare their income in the county. This is why Talbot County's income tax revenues are volatile and difficult to predict, and that is due to the small percentage of high-wage earners that claim Talbot County as their home. Our FY25 budget represents an increase in projections at $37 million, which is in alignment with levels that we've received over the last five years. Overall, education expenditures for Talbot County represent 37.7% of its total budget. This includes expenses for Talbot County Public Schools, Chesapeake College, and the Talbot County Free Library. Talbot County Public Schools alone represent 43.4% of the county's operating expenditures. This schedule or this chart in front of you is total general fund expenditures, but our operating expenditures are those recurring expenditures that we will have every year as opposed to our investment and our capital outlay and our capital projects, which will vary from year to year. In addition to the mandated funding, the county has included an additional appropriation of $2.8 million. Maryland Blueprint Required Local Share Funding increased by $810,000 in FY25. Funding to support Talbot County Schools increased overall by $3.65 million above FY24 levels. By moving the increase in school funding to the educational supplement, the county is providing a more structurally balanced budget. Included in the CIP budget is $16.9 million in the capital projects request for Chapel District Elementary School renovations and an additional funding of $1.5 million for other capital improvement projects to be prioritized by Talbot County Public Schools. And while not a part of the appropriation to the schools, the county further supports the safety at Talbot County Public Schools by including an additional position for a school resource officer supervisor in this budget. This will enable our Talbot County Sheriff's Office to ensure that each school has proper coverage and an SRO on site during school hours. Public safety accounts for 22.7% of the total budget with general government at 10.7%. There are $2.9 million in capital outlay expenditures included in this budget. These are nonrecurring expenditures, and the level of funding required for these types of expenditures do fluctuate from year to year. The FY25 budget also includes an investment in county infrastructure, or CIP, of $27.5 million to be paid for with fund balance reserves. Personnel actions included in this expense chart are a 3% cost of living adjustment and one step for employees. It also includes five new public safety positions and other benefits actions for public safety that were taken. These will provide recruitment and retention opportunities for our public safety departments. For our fund balance, our total fund balance and rainy day funds reserve, the fund balance at the end of June 30, 2023, was $90.7 million, which grew $22.4 million from the end of FY22. At the end of FY23, Talbot County had $15.9 million designated as rainy day reserves. These reserves give the county less exposure to the risks associated with revenue and expenditure volatility, particularly in times of inflation or recession. We are still experiencing elevated levels of inflation, and those increases are also included in this budget. This strong fund balance is a result of the county's conservative budgeting methods, and those conservative budgeting methods were the guidance for staff and the formulation of the budget that you have before you. I'd like to close with what you would call our scorecard, our rating of how well Talbot County navigates the budget process. In September 2022, we were rated by Moody's Investor Service and Fitch Ratings as part of our process to go out for a bond issuance. Moody said financially the county is very strong, and the management team is generally conservative in its budgeting. Our credit strengths were low, long-term liabilities with a manageable long-term capital plan, along with a very strong reserve position. Fitch Ratings' assessment of the county's financial resilience as being in the highest category is based on the combined strength of its fund balance position, its ample expenditure flexibility, and its strong ability to adjust revenues through policy action to counterbalance its historically volatile revenues. The county typically increases its property tax levy by the full amount allowed annually under the county charter. Both the property and the income tax remain the lowest in the state. Sorry about that.
Sir, counsel, that completes staff's overview of the proposed or introduced FY25 budget. And certainly, we can see we have great talent. Our finance office, very proud of the work that they do, and it's an honor to serve you, and we'll turn it back to you at this point. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And so now it's our turn to hear from the public on this. It is, we'll open the public hearing to comments heard. On bill number 1553, we will ask that you please state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak if you're representing yourself, five minutes to speak if you're speaking on behalf of a group or organization.
Okay. Would anybody like to come on up and talk about the budget? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
I want to say thank you very much. My name's Dana Newman. I'm representing the Talbot County Free Library. I live at 6295 Bosman Nevet Road in Nevet, Maryland. First of all, I want to say that we have a nice representation from the library. So I want to recognize our board members and other friends that have shown up today, as well as staff members. I want to just make sure that you really understand, we really appreciate your support over the last, really, almost 10 years for this project. I was in touch recently with Robert Horvath, who was the director before me, and he saw an article and had gotten in touch with me about how thankful he was that this project is moving forward. So I did want to just underscore that that started before I even came to Talbot County. And so I want to recognize his efforts in starting this really valuable project. I also want to thank you because our staff do a tremendous job out there. They're essential, and so are county staff. They do just a remarkable job every day, the staff here, the staff at the library, the staff at the college, and of course, the schools and everywhere else, all of your agencies. So I want to underscore a thank you for the recognition and the salary increases for them. And I just want to say that the St. Michael's Library is just a wonderful place. I was there this morning. There were people from the Benedictine School there. Staff were just making them laugh. It was a really joyful experience to see that. And that happens in county libraries every day. We just have two libraries, so each library is a very important facility. And we just want to make sure that the spaces are adequate and that they serve the public in the best way possible. We do what we do every day for the public. So again, thank you very much. And I just want to go ahead and say again, we appreciate you and all of your efforts because you are really not getting compensated for what you do. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Can we make a comment?
Yeah, sure, guys. Yeah.
So being new to this, I always have to ask Mr. President, can I make a comment during public comments right now? But anyway, Dana, I thank you for that. But I also want to say what a remarkable bartender you have. As one of your employees for the Tis event last week, for making me my non-alcoholic beverage last week. So thank you so much for that.
That's good. That's good. Anybody else like to come up? Yep.
Mr. President, my name is Cliff Coppersmith. I live at 145 McKenna Lane in Centerville, Maryland. Sorry to say that's in Queen Anne's County. But I'm here with Karen Smith, our CFO, representing Chesapeake College. And I just, first of all, I want to thank the council for the unanimous support for our budget, which was, of course, given to us a couple of weeks ago in the multi-county meeting on campus. The college is in great shape financially despite the issues we had with state funding this past year. I want to thank you and the council for the strong support we got, along with all of our counties and our local delegation, and helped us get at least some of that cut back, including a modification to the rebasing of the Cade formula. With that said, we had to make a $700,000 cut to our budget as a result of that reallocation. But we're still, like you, we're conservative budget composers. And Karen's done a wonderful job, you know, providing some savings at the college. We're now filling some positions, both vacant and ones we were hoping to bring onboard this next year. But that being said, the college still is in a strong position. We're serving students well. To Clay, I want to tell him we have our first waitlist in paramedic going into the next enrollment cycle, and we see a lot of strong interest in the health professions. Those students seem to be returning to us in the coming years. So enrollment's good, our budget's solid. We just finished a very productive reaccreditation process with our regional accreditor, which we should be getting final word on that in June, which basically reaffirms our status as an institution of higher education, and it makes us eligible to receive federal funding. We're also finishing up our next five-year strategic plan, which is also in great shape. And just across the board, the college is healthy, and it's because of the support of you as leaders in our regional county setup that we have. Of course, we're a five-county institution, the only one of its kind in the state of Maryland. But we do appreciate the unanimous support we've had from all of you, which I can say all of you have some connection to the college. Dave was just recently at an open house, I believe, with one of his children. And we are happy to serve, and we are happy to provide a quality experience for our students. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to thank you again for the wonderful open house. And of course, you mentioned we got together for the multi-county meeting. So thank you for hosting us again this year. But the open house was spectacular. You guys did a wonderful job, and it was really cool to go across and see some of the amazing things you guys are doing at your campus. So thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one little update on the building project. We're working very hard to get that on the state list next year. We're working with MHEC and the state agencies that deal with all this construction facility stuff. Probably the most exciting thing is the state's now has a non-credit formula for supporting the construction of higher education facilities that's new and is helping us get this in a good place. I think we have a solid pathway to get it on the list, and we're working through that right now with MHEC.
That's great. That's great. Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming too.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Sherman. I live at 7453 Karen Avenue in Easton. I'm president of the Talbot County Free Library Board of Trustees. And with me...
I'm Charles Yonkers. I've been at 8395 Cummings Road in Whitman. And I'm on the board for, since 2019.
First of all, I hope you're not tired of being thanked, because that's really what I am here to do again, is thank you for all your support. Our library is 99 years old and would never have reached that age without the constant support we've had from this community. So we really need, we really want you to know on behalf of our board and our staff, the whole library, and the many volunteers, how much we appreciate that. And especially, I want to thank you for your support of the St. Michael's expansion. It's such an exciting project, and it's been designed really in response to the patrons in the Bay Hundred area telling us what they wanted to see in the library. And that's how it's been designed and developed. And I think it's such a wonderful example of community involvement and response to those community members. So thank you. I think your response to our community is just amazing, and we really so much appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would only add that the, a single visit to the website or to look at the statistics that are generated for the board on a monthly basis will impress you with the participation that the community takes at the library, through the library, with the library. The partnership outreach of the library, in my opinion, is extensive and wonderful. It's an engine of community. And in my five years, I've just seen it get bigger, better, and richer. Your support is so important to that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
I am Emily Canute Hansen. I live at 215 Bonfield Avenue in Oxford. I am president of the Friends of the Talbot County Free Library. And while everybody's thanking you, I want you to understand that when we talk at a public hearing, the public supports the Friends so incredibly that in its 50th year, this year, we have over $112,000 in our bank account through investments. And we are proud to announce that $50,000 raised by our Friends, who give less than $100 each, is now dedicated to the St. Michael's Library expansion. And we're very proud of that. And so while I want to thank you for your support, because we wouldn't have our support without bragging about yours, we hope you can brag about our support because we truly represent the public.
That sounds great. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to come up? Okay.
Written comments will be accepted by the county council on the budget until Friday, May 9 at noon. Emailed comments can be sent to publiccomment@talbotcountymd.gov. We will now recess the public hearing on bill number 1553 until this evening.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. The public hearing on bill 1553 will continue at 7:00 PM this evening at Easton Elementary School Cafeteria, located at 307 Glenwood Avenue here in Easton. This bill is eligible for vote on Tuesday, May 28.
Okay, that sounds great.
All right.
All right. So we'll move into county manager report.
Great. Thank you, counsel. Under county manager report, this afternoon, we have no board and committee appointments to bring forward today. I would invite Ray Clark, your county engineer, to come forward. Ray has a request from the Department of Public Work to apply for and accept operation and maintenance funds from the Maryland Department of Environment Bay Restoration Fund, BRF, and he'll explain the detail relative to that.
Thank you, counsel. I'm Ray Clark, county engineer. Again, since everybody's thanking you, I'll thank you beforehand. Ultimately, this is a grant that MDE offers every year. It's typically a $30,000 grant provided to enhance nutrient removal wastewater treatment plants or those plants that were upgraded with enhanced nutrient removal technologies. Typically, what happens is, right now, the state, if you do operate your plant at a higher level of treatment, and we are currently at about .9 milligrams per liter of total nitrogen, our discharge permit is actually 3 milligrams per liter. And we worked very hard to achieve a non-detect for phosphorus, total phosphorus. And so I think we've met that for 2023. And ultimately, the discharge permit for total phosphorus is .3 milligrams per liter. So what will end up happening is that, you know, where we're coming before you, I guess, for the request to submit an application to MDE for the $30,000 grant. But last year, because we had such a high level of performance on our wastewater treatment plant, we ended up receiving $42,000. So we could receive some additional funding as well this year. So I'm here to request your all support to go ahead and move forward with making that application and accepting it once we've been advised.
Okay.
Go ahead. Mr. Clark, this is wonderful news, and thank you for pursuing this opportunity. I certainly remember the days when storms caused overflows from this plant, that public health warnings... health warnings had to be routinely posted for the Miles River, and because of you and your staff and all the effort that is put into that plant, that is, those days are behind us, and this is just one more step in ensuring clean waters for Talbot County, so enthusiastically endorse this request. I'll move that we approve it.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray, for your ongoing dedication and hard work. Council, the next item I have, or actually, next two items, are requests from the town of Saint Michael's for letters of support. The first one, the town of Saint Michael's requesting council approval for a letter of support for their application for grant funding in the amount of approximately one point one eight seven million dollars from Maryland SHA, State Highway Administration, Transportation Alternative Program, or TAP, for the Saint Michael's Nature Trails and Multi-Use Bike Way Extension Project. No county funds are required, and if you want, I'll roll right into the second letter request, if you don't mind. The second letter is a request from the town of Saint Michael's requesting council approval for a letter of support for their application for grant funding in the amount of two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars from Maryland Department of Transportation, KEMLAMFIR Bike Ways Network Program for the Saint Michael's Nature Trails and Multi-Use Bike Way Extension Project. And again, no county funds are being required for this request, for the two letters, if I could have council support for that or consideration.
So I make a motion for the letters of support for both requests.
I'll second and add that since the pandemic, Americans and Talbot County residents have been spending so much more time on outdoor recreation, and this opportunity for, will benefit residents of Saint Michael's, it will benefit other residents of Talbot County outside of Saint Michael's. This should have our enthusiastic support.
Okay, so we've got a motion second to send for Saint Michael's two letters of support for them. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, Council, and because you enjoy our county engineer so much, I'll call Ray back to the table. Ray is here to request, we have a request from Maryland Department of Environment for a waiver of a fifteen-day comment period on sewage sludge utilization application by Trap East Holdings Business Trust for startup of the Trap East Wastewater Treatment Plant thirty-five hundred Lake Echo Drive in Trap, and Ray will explain the details relative to this request.
I'll do my best. First off, typically, Council, we have a situation where Trap East Holdings, I guess, is their lakeside plant, is they're working to start this plant up, and typically, when you're starting up a new wastewater treatment plant, or you're trying to achieve certain levels of treatment, you will basically have a pumper truck and ultimately take the waste-activated sludge that's currently being processed within a reactor of an E and R facility. You'll take that waste-activated sludge and move that to a new facility. That then seeds that plant, so you're not in the process of trying to take just bacteria that's never been cultivated in an E and R facility, you're kind of jump-starting the operations this way. So this is what I believe, you know, this is what's being requested, is a sludge utilization permit to move that sludge from, I believe it's the Easton Wastewater Treatment Plant, to the town of Trap's lakeside plant in an effort to jump-start their E and R process. That would then also mean that they'll be beginning the process of diverting that, the hundred and twenty EDUs from the existing town trap to the new lakeside facility, because this is a time you're going to want to have the organics to basically start feeding those bugs that you just brought in. As a, just so the council's aware, the county does this as well. We work typically every year to apply for a sludge utilization permit, that we can then move sludge from our wastewater treatment plants in the event that we do need them, and a case in point, at the Preservate Wine Mills, we were having difficulties in meeting the discharge permit, so we, you know, as an interim approach, we worked with MDE to say, look, we no longer want to put it in this large, what we call pre-aerated treatment tank, we're going to discharge all the organics that are coming from the houses to the rotating biological contactor unit or RBC unit, and to help kind of stimulate this, we actually transferred waste-activated sludge, about thirty-five hundred to four thousand gallons, to the Preservate Wine Mills, and we actually saw our total nitrogens that were running about, let's say, almost twenty milligrams per liter drop to nine, and so I believe it was last month, they now had been, or reported to be about six. So again, this is to help kind of stimulate the operations. Don't think it's going to be sustainable, unfortunately, at the Preservate Wine Mills, but it's our way to try and drive those numbers down and comply with the permit.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, does the waiver of this timeline mean that we're going to get this plant into operation that much sooner, that we will, that this will shorten the timeline, that we're diverting waste from lakeside over to the old Trap Wastewater Treatment Plant?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Well, that is good news.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's something that I can enthusiastically support.
I have some questions. What is the status of the opening of the Trap East plant?
This would probably, my understanding, from what I think at the last public hearing that was discussed, the, I believe, they were looking at the operation of the wastewater treatment plant by mid-May, but I think they were looking at ultimately June first. So this is actually a process right now in having this sludge brought in. They're, you know, you're bringing in that sludge in an effort to start that process of basically now treating at that wastewater treatment facility. So, I mean, it's kind of like looking at, let's say, from a layman's perspective, if you had, let's say, bare ground, but you wanted to have grass, you know, if you just let the bare ground take place, you're going to have weeds and all other kinds of stuff. You might have metal grass. At least by this way, when you're adding seed, you're getting that, you know, let's say, a fescue kind of grass growing, you're getting that right microorganisms that have been trained within these bioreactors to grow and consume the organics.
I also see in the letter from MDE, because I think the permit was submitted by Trap East back in March, and then MDE responded to that April twenty-ninth, and saying that the shortening the time is when the applicant needs the permit urgently and can't wait fifteen days, and I didn't see any articulation of why the fifteen days, I think we're halfway through it anyway, it was so urgent.
I think it was for them to get the plant up and running and started, so that's their primary objective, is getting that E and R facility operational.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ray? Okay, so we've got a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to go ahead and help Trap's wastewater treatment plant with the proper removal of what Ray said, okay?
So just to clarify, so this would be a waiver of the fifteen-day comment period?
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. I complete your county manager report for today.
Okay, all right. Next, on the agenda is public comment. Nobody left. Okay. Did you want to come up, Martha?
I am a Talbot County citizen.
I know you are, okay? Okay, all right, all right. We didn't have any, no, we didn't, okay. All right, next would be council comments.
No comments.
Okay, okay.
Most of us were able to be there for the Talbot County Business Appreciation Summit last Thursday, in which we recognized a number of our business and nonprofit partners around for the remarkable achievements that they're bringing to this county, a heartwarming session, and was glad to be included as part of that.
That's great, that's great, I'd agree.
I should have said this when the library people were here, but they had a celebration, a fiftieth anniversary with a trivia game, and it was great fun. We didn't win, my team didn't, but it was really a good celebration, and I wish the turnout had been more. There'd been more people that knew about it and came to it. I appreciate what the library does, and it was a good time.
That's great, that's great.
All right. One, I want to say happy belated birthday to our county manager, Clay Stan. Celebrate him, as we should do all of our Talbot Countyans. Second, Dave and I had an opportunity to go to the Talbot County Public School breakfast, where they recognized community partners. That was a great event. All of the community partners were, that were recognized or doing great things in the community, and that was great to be there and experience that. And then also the summit, the business summit that one of you guys mentioned, I can't remember now, but it was great to see Talbot County come together and do that summit. So kudos to Cassandra and her team and everyone else that participated in that, and that's all I have, sir.
President Callahan, can you come back to me for just a brief second? Keisha's being a little modest, so she was actually one of the recipients, her foundation was one of the recipients of the community partners, so I'll retract my no-comment statement and say congratulations, Keisha, on resetting it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
I appreciate that.
Good job. And all, I just want to just comment once again, we're going to get together again tonight at seven o'clock and do this again, so the public's welcome to come out and experience that with us at the elementary school.
Yeah, Easton Elementary.
Yeah, Easton Elementary School, and Martha and Caitlin, really want to thank you and your staff for the budget this year. You did, you guys did a phenomenal job, and play all your staff, and Jess and Susan. You guys really, you really hit it out of the park, you know? We worked really, really hard with council, and council, you did, you guys did a good job. You really did, and we spent a lot of time on it, and I think we've come up with a really good solution for everybody, so hopefully, the school won't kill us tonight, hopefully, you know? So, but I think, you know, everything with the outcome of everything, I think we've done a good job trying to spread the love and give a little bit to everybody, so hopefully everybody will be happy at the end of this, and we can move on and do good things, okay?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May fourteenth, beginning at six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at three o'clock PM for a work session with the finance director for final budget fiscal twenty-five, budget deliberations, and then adjourning into closed session. The work session is open to the public and will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room. Therefore, is there a motion to recess this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
And a second.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, I'll see you guys.